It's 5:30. It's time to call the commission meeting to order. Would you please stand as we recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting. It's glad to see so many people here in the facility for a change. Thank you for being here. All right, first item, adoption of the agenda. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any amendments to it? Commissioner Hayes?
I have, Mr. Mayor. I have no amendments.
All right, thank you. Mr. Cliff?
Mayor, I'd like to have item C, E, and F moved to items for commission action out of the consent agenda.
Okay, that was C, E, and F.
C, D is in dog.
Oh, D, and F?
And F.
Okay.
Oh, excuse me, you're right. It was E. I wrote the wrong letter down.
C?
C. E.
E and F. All right, so do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as modified in the consent, with the consent agenda.
Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, three zero. Item number two, appointments to the tree board. We have one expired term, and I have a Mr. McCray that has applied, and I would like to make a motion to approve him to be a member on the tree board. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. We also have on the IHPRC one expired term, and I make a motion that I appoint Sean Clapp to serve on that board. Do I have a second on that?
I second it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Item number three, presentations. Tonight, we are recognizing our Director of Public Works, Mike Passour, who is retiring after over 31 years of service to the City of Independence. Mike's career been with the city, began with the city in 1989 as a seasonal at the street department, and was hired full-time later that year as PSW-1. Mike was promoted in 1990 to a PSW-2, in 1994 as a PSW-3, and in 1996 as an assistant foreman. In 1999, Mike began as an interim assistant street supervisor, in 2001 as interim street supervisor, in 2003 as street supervisor, and in 2008 as Director of Public Works, where he has served since. On the part of the commission and the citizens of Independence, Mike, I would like to thank you for your 30 years of service. I want to congratulate you on your retirement. A couple of words of advice, and one thing to always remember, every day is Saturday to you now. And the other one is that you're going to have so much time. I don't know whether your schedule's going to be full or not, but I do hope you enjoy your time off. You work hard to get this, to get to this point in your life to where you can retire. So I wish you the very best, and pace yourself. You don't want to wear yourself out all at one time. But I, we appreciate what you've done for this city. Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure to work for the City of Independence. I enjoyed working with the employees, past and present, city commissioners, past and present. And, thank you.
All right, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
All right, item B, we have a presentation of Citizen Life Saving Awards to Jason Curtis and Mike Schinkel. Sean?
Good evening, Commissioners. If I could have Mike and Jason come up there? On February 9th, at approximately 3:30 a.m., Jason arrived at work at the donut shop and could smell smoke. He went inside and alerted Mike, who came outside with him. They then could see flames reflecting off the windows of a house in the neighborhood, and then saw the fire at 708 Washington. Jason called 911, and on the way to the house, met a female running down the street toward them, stating her house was on fire and people were trapped. Jason and Mike ran up to the house and could see someone trying to escape through a window on the front porch. The window was not big enough to make a rescue, so Jason broke out the window, and with Mike's assistance, pulled two victims from the residence. All three victims of the house were transported to NDER and are doing good today. And, an unexplainable event happened that night, which you can call it what you want, but I call it a godlike moment, and I'd kind of like Jason to explain what happened.
As we got up to the house, Mike and I both had our phones out. I was wearing batting gloves, like baseball batting gloves. As we got to the house, I tried to turn the phone on. Typically, the phone would not activate or work, but I touched the phone and my flashlight came on, even with the batting gloves on. I would call that the godlike event that we had, had happened. We were able to, to see the house, see the guy that was trying to get out.
Mayor, if you would like to come present the certificates?
All right, Jason Curtis. Jason, I've known Jason. I've known Carrie. Matter of fact, I coached Carrie in soccer when my kids were little. I know the Curtis's, fine people, fine family. And this, this, for Jason doing this was not unusual. Jason has always been that type of a, of a person. I've known Jason for a good number of years. Very good person. Anyway, on February 9th, 2021, you arrived at work and could smell smoke. You notified a fellow employee and started to investigate when you spotted a house on fire. You immediately called 911 and observed a woman running towards you, stating her house was on fire and people were trapped. You ran up to the house and pulled two victims from a bedroom window without hesitation, and then selfishly risked your life to save the life of these two victims. This life-saving award is awarded by the City of Independence as a result of an act to save or preserve human life that otherwise could have expired without immediate intervention. This award is hereby presented to Jason Curtis on this 11th day of March, 2021. Mike Schinkel, on February 9th, 2021, you were at work when a fellow employee stated he could smell smoke. So you went with him to investigate. At this time, you observed a woman running toward you stating her house was on fire and people were trapped. You ran up to the house and pulled two victims from a bedroom window without hesitation, and then selfishly risked your life to save the life of these two victims. This life-saving award is awarded by the City of Independence as a result of an act to save or preserve human life that otherwise could have expired without immediate intervention. This award is hereby presented to Mike Schinkel. Mike? All right, moving right along. Item four, the consent agenda. And we made some amendments on this, but with that being noted, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with items C, E, and F being removed to items for commission action.
Do I have?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. All right, item five, items for commission action.
Do you want to do the one you took off consent first?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's start with item C. And that is, consider an ordinance adding an ex officio member representing the Housing Authority to the Economic Development Advisory Board, and modifying the date and time of Economic Development Advisory Board meetings.
Mayor and Commissioner Hayes, when we established the Economic Development Advisory Board, we spent some time discussing how the interaction would be and the direction of the committee. I visited with City Manager Kelly Passour, and I think she had said she had visited with you, but we haven't had the opportunity, you know. When we established the committee, we shared our ideas and our direction for the committee, and by this, I think it adds an extra depth that, it's, it's kind of unusual, but I, I think it adds some depth after consideration of an element that will bring a lot of questions for businesses coming to town, and I want to make sure we're all on the same direction. I see that what it would add is not as much the interaction of the Housing Authority, but the ideas and the knowledge that the, the director would have in, in our situations for available housing, and which direction would need to be promoted. Of course, with their direction, moderate housing, low income, that's covered, but we've got a gap in, from moderate on on up. And how that's directed, I think that's the impact that this would add to the, the executive direction, the, excuse me, Economic Advisory Council. I just want to see what, what your thoughts were in, in the position.
Commissioner Hayes?
Well, I couldn't agree with you more. Housing being one of the top elements of economic development concern throughout most of the rural America, and how to crack the, kind of the nut with regard to what are the housing concerns, and how do we answer the housing concerns of people who want to grow their businesses here, who want to start their businesses here, and, and find their employees here, or find their employees' housing here, so that they don't have some kind of onerous commute. So these, these types of questions, I think, would probably be valuable to have answers to, or at least have relevant data for, and I think the Housing Authority has that type of data available, and should be able to offer it to the Economic Development Advisory Board when those questions are asked.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hayes. I'm in agreement with both the gentlemen. I remember when the recruitment of Textron Cesna was here, and my, my boss at the time, Don Hill, was heavily involved in the recruitment of that, and they did a survey of all the housing that was available in the neighborhood, and did a survey of that. So that, that took a tremendous amount of effort and time to put that together, and I think this is a good move that will help strengthen the Economic Development Advisory Board, and to bring, bring her on board to help answer those questions and navigate through the process. So I believe we're all three in agreement. I, I think it's, it's a good deal, good deal for the board.
I could see that, you know, we have spent a lot of time looking at moderate income, and, and looking at the, the low income with housing, but the data for development, you know, question, are there suitable sites, or where would, would an executive look to locate? Do we have areas that are available for them to build? Are we looking at having to go beyond the city limits to find that lot? You know, because all this is going to affect our layout of our utilities, which, you know, this comes back then to the comprehensive plan, how it develops. So, you know, I, I thought we've got it really covered without the, the position for moderate and low income, but when you look at, at companies bringing in their executives, which we, we definitely want the leadership as part of our community too, you know, we haven't got that data that I've seen on what's available or what growth, and, you know, as we're looking at our infrastructure in water treatment, water distribution, and sewer collection, those items are going to be real important to know what direction we would have to go. So, in that, it's kind of totally different direction. I think that housing is looked at, but, you know, it's one that I think we need to, to consider with economic development, and maybe, you know, this could almost spur a small subcommittee to help assist and gather. But, I felt when we're going in and looking at changing a board that we talked about, direction, and looked at, because I think this, to get this board established, it was over a year and a half, two years. We had a lot of discussion. And to keep it relevant, to keep it on, on track, I think that's where we, we just can't address this with consent item, that the discussion and making sure we're all putting input and, and going together to support the decision and the commitment together. So, I have no further comments, so I'll turn it to the mayor.
All right, if there's no further questions, do I have a motion?
I move to adopt an ordinance adding an ex officio member representing the Housing Authority to the Economic Development Advisory Board, and modifying the date and time of the, of the, of Economic Development Advisory Board meetings.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Item E, consider a scope of work to solicit proposals for an ADA accessible restroom located within Kitty Land at Ralph Mitchell Zoo.
Mayor and Commissioner Hayes is reviewing the, the information. I had, had a question regarding some of the wording, and kind of the overall direction we're looking at. I visited with Kelly and David this afternoon, but in, in the purpose of the proposal, it reads, requesting proposals from contractors to design and build an ADA accessible single-stall restroom. And, I, I think the intent from our discussion is that a, a design professional, an architect, would be hired in that capacity, but the reference is for a contractor, which alludes more to a design-build, that the contractor would be the primary drive of the project, that he would bring on a design professional, an architect, that would work under him. With that type of arrangement, then, we lose representation and protection for our interests to make sure the work is being prepared and completed as we've agreed to. The architect being the, the drive that would work with, with Angela to establish the criteria, and, and make sure that what she's desired is actually completed in the, in the project, the construction, that corners aren't, aren't cut. And it also give her, by direct work and under her control of an architect, then the, the input would be more effective, that we would get what she's needed. But then as a side fruit of that, it would allow our, our new building inspector to work closer with the architect for training and instruction, and, and give him a, a lot of knowledge, so it could really improve the training for his position. Then, the other question I had was, was scheduling, because it, it looked like we do have an ADA project in the park, and this was kind of presented as a separate entity that would be bid out, or the two weren't tied in. We're tying the two at the same bid period would provide some cost savings and, and cut down some duplication of work and protection for the, the city staff and, and dealing with, with problems. But, you know, I liked your presentation and your proposal, but you were soliciting for a design professional and not a contractor?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, good, good, because, you know, I, I, I think the format gives a lot of direction in doing that one thing that it might be, and maybe it's going to be brought out later, is looking at the storage area or something on to control for your materials, but, you know, kind of a, a brief program of space and, and things. I just want to make sure we were looking, so, because the wording, when, when I read it, you know, it, it says we're going to hire a contractor.
We can, we will make, we can make that modification.
Okay.
And, because that is her desire.
And then maybe some wording that this would become part of the ADA project bid under the?
Yes, and I think that was Lacy's desire too, that once we got this design back together, we would go out for one bid package for the whole product, and she's sticking her head yes. So it would be one big project that Angela could then watch over, along with the building inspector.
I think that would be helpful to note into the proposal too, so that the design professional was working with them. Great.
Yep.
Okay.
She's done a great job. I can't say enough for the work Angela's doing.
It is. I like the, the background you gave of the parks. It really sets the tone of the direction that you're looking at going with the Kitty Land area.
And it's something much needed in that area. We really don't have a bathroom facility in that particular part of the park. So it's something that's probably long overdue, so I appreciate all the work that you did into bringing this together. So I'm looking forward to this project being bitted out, completed, and, and seeing what it looks like, the finished product looks like when it's all completed. Commissioner Hayes, do you have some comments?
I just have a question, and that is, is there a reason why the ADA accessible restroom was brought in to us separately from the other ADA work that's being done out there? Is this an add-on to what we had talked about earlier, or is this?
We just needed the design. We needed, we needed the architect to design this part. The other part's been designed by Trans Systems.
So this isn't add-on for design of the bathroom?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do we need to clarify that this is design services for the building alone?
Right.
That we're, we're already under contract for construction services for the ADA work? So this architect would not be over the entire project as a whole? It's purely design services of the restroom facility?
Yeah. Yeah. But we will bid out the work together, yes.
You would form one bid package?
Correct.
Yeah.
But the architect wouldn't really have any points in the, in that part of it. So we don't, I don't think we need to add it to this scope of work.
Okay.
I think the, now, just the information that, that this project will be included in one bid package that includes the ADA work, so that they know that there's coordination that the, the architect's going to have to do with Trans Systems to form one package. They're going to have to communicate so that they work out access, scheduling. Right now, with the two separate contracts, you'll have two different firms administering, so they have to know that they have to work together. They can't go and pour sidewalks before you They can't go and pour sidewalks before utilities are put in to the restroom, or, you know, vice versa. So, you know, letting them know that they will be solely responsible for the design development, but they've got to formulate their package to fit in a bid package with the civil engineer.
Okay.
Yeah. And just kind of covering all the bases upfront is...
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you.
All right.
I have my answer, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Angela. Okay, do I have a motion on this?
I move to approve the scope of work and authorize city staff to solicit proposals for the ADA Kitty Land restroom design and construction drawings.
I second that motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. And we're moving to item. Item F. Consider a scope of work to receive proposals for zoo master plan. Angela? Again.
So, this project is a much-needed project out at the zoo. We do not have a current zoo master plan, and part of getting accredited through AZA is having that particular plan in place. The last time that we had a full master plan done was in 1985, and that was a five-year plan. The plans that they're looking at doing now, most zoos are, it's twenty-year plan is what they would be, what we would be looking at getting completed. And then that would guide everything from construction to new animals that we bring in, exhibits, the direction that we're going as far as the educational programs, our businesses as far as conservation is concerned, how we would get involved into scientific projects, which is a big push of what AZA says that zoos across America should be doing.
And by the accreditation, what will this actually bring? What are some of the benefits of the accreditation?
One of the largest benefits of accreditation is the ability to apply for large grants across zoos. That's one of the ways, if you go to a lot of the larger zoos, if you go to Sedgwick County, if you go to the National Zoo that's over there in Bronx in New York, a lot of the exhibits that they have that are built, a lot of the large animals that they get on display are through grants that AZA puts out, and some of those grants are multimillion-dollar grants that, right now, because we don't hold that accreditation, we have no way of applying for those grants and getting those monies out here to our particular zoo. In addition, AZA, they also oversee loans of animals. So, if a zoo can show that they have a facility to house a certain type of animal, and they have the means to produce care for that animal, including vet care, then you can get loans for animals out, and then two entities would cross-talk and then say, okay, well, we'll loan you such and such out here at your zoo for a year, as long as you're taking care of that. And then we could rotate animals out. I know that that's one of the things when I speak to members in the community, that they say to the zoo staff, is that they, you know, would love to see animals brought back in that historically we had out at the zoo, and then this would give us a means to do that and to be doing that, you know, with other zoos and to be able to collaborate with them, and then, you know, take those animals back and be able to get something else as well. So, it would keep the collection fresh, so people would come out, you know, more often. It wouldn't be the same animals all the time.
All right. That's, that sounds like some good information. I know keeping it fresh would draw people to come to see, especially if there were some animals that, like you said, we used to have in the past that could be brought forward, and we'd have them for a specified period of time, but they wouldn't be, they would be our responsibility for that short time, and then they would go back to the zoo. So, it wouldn't be something that we would have long-term care of, but still get the benefit of having that particular animal or animals on site that would induce people to come out and take a look at the park and the zoo, which would be great. And the idea of getting additional grants, money available to help promote and to help bring attractions and events and help fund that to the zoo would be a drawing point for the surrounding areas. So, it sounds like it's a good idea to consider on, so. Commissioner Hayes, you have questions for Angela?
Not really. I think a zoo master plan is really an essential part of our data set that we should have so that we know what to do in terms of budget and forward planning, strategic planning, those kinds of things. And without it, we're just feeling our way in the dark, so I hope that we can get this accomplished.
Commissioner Keflis?
Yeah, I was excited when we met, and you gave us a tour, you know, you shared a little bit of your vision and your concern for the park and the direction, and I think this is the next major step. Now, the zoo plan, master plan will just be for the zoo area?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And what you're looking at is hiring a specialist in zoos that will sit down with you and staff to brainstorm the direction and your vision, that they're going to incorporate that and then enlighten you in other areas that maybe you're not aware of or those conditions. So, that, I guess, two things can happen. You can hire a master planner that comes in and says, here, this is what you need, or you can hire one that's going to sit down and tell me what your vision, tell me what you're desiring, and they can work with you to develop a unique plan for independence, not just something that you'd see everywhere. So, you're looking for that specialist that's in the layout and all that knowledge to help develop your plan. We're not committing to construction, but just an overall direction, that in the end you'll have a drawing, but then also a report that's going to summarize, that you can refer back and forth to going on.
That is correct. Most zoo master plans, they're dependent on the zoo that they're working with. They go as far as even coming out and doing surveys to see where the highest-traffic areas of the zoo are, and then to say, okay, based on this, when you're constructing new exhibits, and this should be the first area that you're planning on doing that in, they can also provide direction as far as, you know, programs that we should work on and implement at the zoo as well. So, there's a couple of different things that they help with. The concept map is one part of that, but then also working with us to say, okay, in year one, this is what you should focus on, year two, let's focus on this, and then on through the twenty years. So, by the time that you're at the twenty-year mark, then it's, everything should be completed that you had kind of set forth, and then you're kind of starting from fresh at that point with another new plans.
So, you're looking for a consultant that would not do just the master plan, but they would serve as your consultant to guide and assist with each step from then on?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, that way, you're tied in with an overall direction, and then as standards change in the industry, they would come in and modify and help you address those?
Yes, and most of the zoos, whenever they're looking at their master plans, they try to foreshadow and to see any changes. So, for example, if they're looking at exhibits, if a zoo director tells them, you know, this is, you know, I want to get tigers into a zoo in the next five or ten years, they will take a look at the minimum requirements of the caging or the exhibits for that particular animal, and then they will say, based on this, then you would want to design this, you know, maybe one and a half times the size or two times the size of what the minimum requirements are, so that if standards do change in the twenty-year period, that you're not kind of stuck somewhere with an exhibit that all of a sudden is obsolete.
Okay. Do you know if that type of consultant, if they serve just as a consultant for you, or do they then say you want to start implementing a portion of their recommendations, do they serve as the design professional for that phase two?
Some of the firms can do that. It's going to, that would be dependent on the particular firm that we would go into a contract with. Some of them can do that.
Okay. Well, that, I think, was my question, was the master plan for the zoo only and helping work with you, not coming in from the outside and telling you, but actually taking your vision to develop our plan, and then the longevity of a commitment from the designer to implementation of the plan. So, thank you. Appreciate all your work out there, your vision.
Indeed, thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the scope of work and authorize city staff to solicit proposals for a zoo master plan.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, moving to item five. Items for commission action. Item A. Consider adopting an ordinance imposing a moratorium on the establishment of businesses relating to commercial cannabis activity.
Mayor, we've had some inquiries about this, and we don't know what the state's going to do, but we want to be prepared. We took this to the planning commission, and they unanimously recommended adopting a moratorium that would give us time, if the state does allow this legislation to go through, that the city could develop regulations if you want to regulate where these type of business could be relating to near a church or school, things like that, like they do with the liquor stores or the bars or something like that. So, this ordinance is to provide that timeline for six months after the state, if the state legalizes it, to give us that time to develop that.
Okay. So, the state is looking at not only the medical use of cannabis, but extending it further out, or they're considering that? Is that what I understand then?
Jeff, do you know more about what the state's considering?
I think in any given year, you're going to find multiple pieces of legislation, kind of like the alcohol industry, they're doing it piecemeal, step by step, and it'll probably turn out to be kind of a mess like the alcohol statutes, quite frankly. But, you know, there's recreational, there's medicinal, there's CBD oil with THC in it, there's CBD oil that doesn't have THC in it. So, right now, the only thing that's legal is, we have a commercial industrial hemp act, and hemp is defined as really, you know, no THC. So, CBD oil that comes from industrial hemp currently is legal. But if you get your CB, what do you call it, the oil, from marijuana, then it's illegal. And, you know, for enforcement standpoint, it's hard to distinguish what's being sold, I think.
All right.
It's a developing area about that.
All right. So, it's something that will probably continue to come into play probably on a yearly basis, potentially?
I mean, we're surrounded by states that are slowly implementing it on a faster basis than we are, so there's probably pressure, possibly from law enforcement, to be consistent with surrounding states, just to make it easier for enforcement.
Understand. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Commissioners, do you have questions?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Hayes?
I don't have any questions with the uncertainty and this, what seems to be a legislative flux going on with this subject. I just think it's a prudent step for the city to put this in place.
All right, then. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance four-three-five-two imposing a moratorium on the establishment of businesses relating to commercial cannabis activity.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Item B. Consider authorizing the sale of a 1.54 acre strip of land located directly south of 3498 Russ Meyer Boulevard to Midwest Fertilizer LLC.
Mayor, this company approached us, representatives have, and Jeff and I have been talking to him over the last few months, and actually, their building was constructed on city property. And so, they were trying to get that cleaned up, so basically, this would sell them the strip to ensure that their building is all on their property and not on the city's property.
Now, this property was basically, this strip was basically, didn't have any city, any city facilities on it, it was just a...
No, part of the property is used for agriculture use, part of it had the former sewer plant that served the airport many years ago.
Okay.
And I know that some of the crews use it for some of their activities as far as clean rubble and that kind of thing.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
So, this piece of, pardon me, this piece of land doesn't interfere with any long-range plans for the airport or the airport industrial park?
No, we, there is a rail, a line that runs behind it. David, if you'll go to the next slide, it's overlaid, I overlaid it on an aerial, but there is a rail line that is basically to the east of this, and I had John review that to see if we ever had a company that came in that wanted a spur line, if we would have room to put that in, if we went ahead and did this, and he said, he said that he thought that we would and that we wouldn't need any additional easements, so we did check into that.
Okay.
It seems like a reasonable accommodation to me.
What's the red line on the right side of the screen?
Those, that's coming out of pictometry, and those are probably your property lines, and the reason it's blue over that is I selected that property, so it outlines it in blue. And then I took the survey, I removed the white, and I overlaid it over the aerial, so you could kind of see where it laid out on the aerial.
So, the distance between the new southeast corner pen of what we're selling and is that area, I guess, first, is the area east of Midwest Fertilizing, is that the city property?
Yes, the city owns property to the east and south, and then Cessna is to the west.
The, between the new southeast corner pen and that red line, is that sufficient, that it's not going to restrict our access to that back part, or we haven't, I guess, basically...
There's kind of a little access area that they use when they farm at this directly south of that area, and I believe John went out there and walked it and reviewed it, and he didn't think it would be an issue.
And the portion south of this lot, we retain adequate property, that it's not going to restrict our development or use of it?
No, I mean, they were actually using that property anyway, so, so we weren't utilizing it.
Sounds like a good time to get things cleaned up. It'll be beneficial for both parties.
All right. If there's no further questions, then do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a real estate sales agreement with Midwest Fertilizer LLC to sell a 1.54 acre strip of land directly south of 3498 Russ Meyer Boulevard in the amount of $6,000.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item C. Consider adopting a resolution establishing the Central Business District Commercial Building Grant Program. Lacy, how are you?
Oh, I'm good.
April, how are you?
I'm good, thank you.
Yes.
This grant was actually originally established in October of 2016, and it is intended to help downtown business owners complete much-needed repairs and maintenance in historic downtown. These revisions to this program are directed at better describing and outlining the expectations of both city staff and grant applicants by detailing the program processes and requirements. Additionally, the Economic Development Advisory Board recommended establishing a grant maximum of $25,000. Previously, there was no maximum grant award. Funding for this program has been built into the Economic Development Fund in 2021, so it is budgeted. The Economic Development Advisory Board did recommend funding of up to $50,000 in projects per year. And so, that being said, and there are encumbered funds of a little bit over $41,000, so actual current-year funding for this program is really only roughly a little bit over $8,000. Once that... Once that $50,000 was, you know, assigned to a project, the board would revisit to see if there were outstanding applications, if they wanted to fund it above that $50,000 in the current year. Any questions?
Okay, so the, we're increasing the grant maximum, the grant maximum is 25,000, and then it'll be a max of $50,000?
No, cur- currently, there is no maximum on the grant award, so-
Okay.
You, you could, you know, an application could take up $60,000 if they had enough ineligible expenses. The board recommended that we limit that award to $25,000 per applicant.
That would mean that the building owner would be spending $100,000 of eligible expenses to receive the maximum $25,000.
Okay.
As well as each year, if you didn't spend all of the grant money, say, the $50,000 that's set aside annually, if there weren't enough applications and you had $25,000 setting there at the end of the year, the next year you would only add $25,000. You would always just start the beginning of the year with a $50,000 grant, or $50,000 available.
All right. Gentlemen, do we have questions?
I don't have any questions, but I, I just think that it's, it's good to revisit these types of things from time to time to make sure that the language is still clear and it's still applicable and it's still relevant to what we're doing. Of course, supporting the continuation of private investment in our, in our central business district in the downtown of our city is really the key to, part of the key to our city's success, and we really want to encourage that. I like this program and I support the changes. Thank you.
Commissioner Koflics?
Originally, when we just started discussing the program, the purpose was to help preserve some structural issues in some existing buildings. And the intent of doing that would maintain the economic development potential in our central business district. And it, what I, I saw looking through the, the changes would maybe a, a need to clarify the purpose more directly. Instead of the first paragraph, something, you know, just, I'm just throwing this out for an idea, but "The Central Business District Commercial Building Grant Program shall provide assistance in the preservation of the structural integrity of the existing buildings located within the central business district of the city. This program will not be utilized for work other than the items identified within the context of this document, and the sole purpose shall be to aid in stabilization of these structures in order to maintain the economic stability of the central business district." So we, we identify specifically what the purpose is. One of the earlier league conferences they had on, on using city funds, and their presentation was on the public purpose doctrine, and they were talking about how money, tax money can and can't be used. It's gotta be used for the benefit of the community, the public as a whole. And looking at this, cause face value, it's, we are taking public money and using it to benefit that building owner. And I presented a question, I explained to me if this is, okay, and they said, well, in the fact of a downtown building like this, you, you can consider that that building provides jobs. That by maintaining it, you, you strengthen the surrounding buildings too. Somebody comes to visit, unlike an outlying building, here, by coming to one business, you, you tend to go to another business. So they support each other. So the economic development or stabilization or support is really key in the identifying the utilization of the funds, tax funds, to preserve one of these, these buildings. So, you know, I thought by identifying that in the statement and then also preserve specifically structural integrity, cause there were some other items I had, you know, like paint. You know, if we're going to contribute money to aid in replacing a roof, well then why couldn't that building owner use the money that they're saving then to paint? Because paint is not, it's a cosmetic. And if we're looking at 50,000, we want to get the most we can in preserving our buildings. And when you look at a, at a roof of one of these commercial buildings, 20,000 is easy. So, you know, I think that's where we need to get in, in the tuck pointing. And paint is not an area that I think we should be using our economic development money for. But, you know, by keying off to identify the purpose as it is for structural preservation, it, it does two things. It starts bringing into reality what our intent was, but then maybe encouraging others that are facing structural issues to come and seek out an application to help their building. You know, tuck pointing is, with the masonry buildings we've got, there's a lot of areas of tuck pointing. And so, you know, I thought it's a purpose for the first paragraph, and, and it seems like the other things are, are pretty well covered, you know. It's obvious that it's administered by the city with the resolution that we're having to establish that it strengthens and unifies the proposal, the, the grant program too. But that was one, one, one area I saw that we need to make sure we identify specifically our purpose.
It does state, I, I, I am totally fine changing that, if you'll send me that language. It does state that it's for the, to preserve the structural integrity of the buildings, but it's much more direct, the, the way that, that you worded it. I will point out that these are not, this is not funded by ad verum taxes, these are, this is funded through franchise fees. So just to, to clarify that these are, are funded through franchise fees.
Which is a tax that we put on to utilities, so-
Right.
Basically, it's a roundabout tax.
Just to clarify.
In eligibility to qualify to participate in the neighborhood exterior, it should be central business district, commercial building.
What page are you on? Oh, I see it, under eligible. Okay.
Then the next-
Do you wanna touch on exterior painting?
I had some, some notes, eligible improvements. Exterior painting, I already mentioned that I didn't think we should include that in the grant. That we're looking at structural preservation. Masonry, doors, windows, I like the identification, the cosmetic improvements are not reimbursable, so it really ties in that this has to be a security structural issue we're dealing with. But exterior lighting, I don't think that's a structural issue, that's cosmetic. But electrical work, I think when we start looking at the, some of the changes that Evergy has brought with our service entrances, there's, with a commercial building, that's a, a big impact. And I think looking at assisting a building, cause it's gonna do more than just, it's not really structural, but it's fire-related. There's a lot of safety issues with that entrance. So when we're doing electrical work, I think it should be limited to the electrical service entrance. Flooring, support, I guess that includes deteriorated, specifically deteriorated subfloors and underlayments where there'd be holes between the floor joists. Clarification, actual materials and installation costs.
Now Leonard, I do have a question on the exterior painting.
Yeah.
Cause part of some of the programs I've gone through, the exterior painting is dealing with, if you put in new materials, that's raw wood that is required for it to be covered. So that's part of the exterior painting, somebody wants to change up a painting color for the outside of the building, that's not eligible. But if they're putting in, say, new windows, and it's wood windows, and that needs to be painted for the longevity of those windows, that is part of it. Now you're saying that you'd like for that to be pulled out?
Yeah, I think that the money that they're getting from the benefit of us paying for the windows, a portion of it could cover their paint cost, then there's no question that most of the windows, the exterior windows are, are pre-primed. And I would think that this day and age, they would wanna go with a clad window or, you know, a vinyl window that eliminates all their, their painting. But I think with, when you look at, at us paying what, 25% of the material, that they could use that savings money to do some painting.
Well, and, you know, as part of the historical downtown building, one of the things that the historical society prefers, I mean, they have approved some of the vinyl windows, I believe, but they prefer the wood. They actually prefer the rehabilitation of the existing wood, if at all possible. So that's, you know, again, that's fine, we just need to clarify it, but those were the intents.
And I, I guess that's where, you know, historical, we're, we're looking at the longevity of a building, and we have materials available today that can remove maintenance. So I am going to insist the building owner that he repairs wood windows that's gonna need repainting in five years, and he doesn't have money to do it on his own now, and we're paying, we're helping him replace the windows, and I'm gonna restrict him to wood that's gonna put him in five to 10 years to having to repaint those windows. I think that's counterproductive, that, you know-
Well, I mean, that's just part of the historical, I mean, you know, that's the balancing act between the historical requirements and trying to accomplish the goal.
Yeah, and I, you know, even, I'm, I'm on shaky ground as an architect, but I've seen buildings, building the 15, 16 hundreds in Europe, that they're not putting in wood windows. They're not going back with single hung with, they are, and they've got more history than we do. But, you know, that's, that's my opinion. If you, if you can cut the maintenance down, because, you know, you look at a, a bill, large building, professional building went with aluminum windows, but some of the others, if you're gonna spend $100,000 painting a two or three-story one, building with wood windows, and now you gotta come back, and, you know, and they needed work and replaced, hey, why are we restricting an owner?
Well, I, I-
I know.
Get it, it's just, you know, we have to work within the programs that-
Yeah.
Were required to.
I know, and that's, that's a catch-22 that I, I say as a building owner, go clad, go vinyl. You know, look at the long-term, you know, 20, 30 years from now, it'll look brand new still. And, you know, the Booth Hotel was a good example that that's what they were facing with the windows there. And historical society insisted on the wood, but Don Walker, when he did it, he put in Anderson windows and they look as good now. And how many times, I think it was done in the mid-eighties, how many times that had have been painted? And the cost, you know. But anyway, you know, I, I feel that the painting, if, the money that they can save by offsetting some costs on structural, that they could paint the windows, so, and it's open to the other two commissioners too, but-
When I read through this, I, I noticed the cosmetic uses were, were not allowed, were not covered by that. But as far as tuck pointing, roof, utility upgrades, especially with Commissioner Koflics, with Evergy coming down and establishing new rules for overhead services, maybe the money would be better spent on those high-dollar items and then leave some of these lesser items that could be covered by either the landowner or the building owner, landlord or building owner, whoever it is, that maybe some of that money could be used to cover those other necessities that generally don't run up a high-dollar amount, but spend the, the dollar amount on those items. That would be hard for a building owner to come up with, especially roof replacement on that, or tuck pointing, or making repairs to the, some of the stone structure up there on those buildings. Maybe use that money in that instance, and then let some of the other things that could be cosmetic or could be an argument for the other, but maybe restrict that to where, either use the savings or that's something that we feel that you could handle. We're trying to help you with the structural stability of the building itself. So that's, that's just my comments. But I, I understood your cosmetic about those expenses would not be covered, and I wasn't in agreement with that. So if there's no-
So, on, I had a couple others too. On the grant program review committee, it looks like a pretty broad committee. And my, my thought is, the decision of the voting members would be limited to the city manager, assistant city manager, and director of finance, that the other items would, the other members would be non-voting members of the, the board. I, I think the building inspector being non-voting, keeping him as enforcement only is a good idea. Keeps him totally isolated out of any decision that his job becomes purely enforcement. The, the schedule for inspection, I understand it was a standard schedule that covers more than just downtown business areas, so a lot, a lot of them would be marked as not, not applicable. The, the question I had, and I was visiting with, with Kelly and David on just pass fail, what the determination of that would be, how does a building owner know what allowed it or what didn't allow it? And I think, I think David explained, the, the inspector would have the photographs and then add his dialogue that like a, a residence or a shingled roof, it could be fail. And I guess is it passed to be approved, or is it failed that it's not approved? You know, if, if it's failing condition, it marks there? Or how does, how does a pass fail refer, that it is applicable to the grant?
I would look back to Lacy, April, but I think our intent was when the building inspector goes out and he looks at these things, a pass is something that is not rehabilable or would have prior, but something that fails meets the standard to be applicable to this grant. That's how I remember the discussion.
Okay, so then to clarify that what the standard is, and he would identify that there's too many layers of roof on, on the building, it has to be removed, or the existing roof, the fiber of the felt paper showing through, the roof is burnt through, or it's peeling back, or some, or the windows, that with the picture that determine that they are needing to be replaced, he'll identify significant rot and document it.
Yes, and it gives, I think it gives some flexibility also, you know, say, their, their floors, they're coming to this grant to, to get or replace- they're coming to this grant to, to get a replacement of the floor joists or something, but we go in and we see that they've got a hole in the roof, and their roof is leaking. We have the ability to say, we can't, we're not going to put money towards your floors unless you also fix your roof.
Okay. And I'm just, was, was seeing consistency, so that, you know, pass fail, that if I, if I was a building owner, comparing a grant application with another building owner, making sure that our standard of evaluation was, was based the same. So, you're basically going to handle that through the photo documentation and inspectors' notes?
Yeah, I think the photos are key.
Yeah.
I mean, if there's ever a question you guys have, or Kelly, or anybody, we have the photo documentation that we can go back to.
And, you know, one of the things, I, Lacy mentioned something I said earlier. I think something that is of note, that with the city having spent $59,000 on about eight projects, that means that that property owner with that grant, we've had $236,000 invested in our downtown buildings, for eligible expenses only. Most of those projects all had other things that they were doing to those buildings that weren't eligible to be reimbursed for. So we've had some really good investment in our downtown buildings. So I think that's of interest to note.
I think the program can be used to accomplish our original goal of providing some relief and incentive to building owners to address the main concerns. And I think that's how this all began, with some building owners. It was shortly after two buildings suffered major, not total collapse failures, but significant problems. And some building owners came to a commission meeting and addressed the commission of, of how, you know, the, the cost of a structural engineer. And I think the city, we actually hired an engineer that would work with the building owner to make recommendations. And then we came back and said, okay, let's develop a program to address structural issues. And I, I think the, the idea that I had was keep the money going to preserve the structure's integrity, and then let them deal with the building owner accomplished, the other things, that if we can keep the water out of the roof, and, and stabilize the masonry, and both of them had significant masonry damage. I think maybe there were three buildings at that time that, one was an arch collapse, I think some parapet brick fell off of another one, some cosmetic structural, or maybe they were structural lentils, fell, so...
And I could tell you off the top of my head, trying to think back, four of those projects that have been completed, or grants awarded, have been from that structural engineer pointing out a deficiency or a concern. And so it's like case in point one, it was $2,000 worth of tuck pointing, the city's investment was $500.
Right.
But that was something that that structural engineer pointed out. This may be of concern, so we spent the $2,000 to take care of it today, instead of five years from now, when it's a growing problem, it's a $10,000 fix. So, so that was, you know, bringing that structural engineer for those building owners was very beneficial.
And there was a, a lot of really great discussion within the Economic Development Advisory Board related to this grant. And I, one of the noteworthy, you know, discussion items was, we even said, should there be a minimum? Like, we want these high-dollar investments. And, and the board's discussion around that was, you know, no, not necessarily. It's only a 25% match. So, really, any of those investments that are eligible are worthy to the building in, in the structural integrity and preservation of our downtown buildings. So we didn't want to disincentivize anybody for, for, you know, investing in, in the downtown buildings.
It's a minor problem before it became a big one.
Before it comes major, yes.
And since our, our funds are limited, we want to spread to the major issues to preserve, you know, if you, well, just like question, you can have a roof, even mop coating, a, a flat roof with a smooth finish, you've got the, the fiber burning through. You're going to have $5,000 to $6,000 in a flood coat of hot asphalt. But if you do that, you can preserve the roof for another 10 years. So, the advantage of addressing preventative maintenance, or catching maintenance early on, that maybe some repairs can be made to extend the life of the roof, to preserve the decking and the joists below it. And like you mentioned, Lacy, the floor rotted because the roof had a hole in it. And you, you just start spreading the deterioration through the building. So I think that's where the, the structural components are very significant.
And I, I think the board specifically added, under the eligible improvement section, they, they wanted that clarification on, on those specific line items that, you know, says condition warrants need, cosmetic improvements are not reimbursable, to call it out in that section. However, it's restated again as a blanket statement to all eligible improvements in the ineligible section. The first line is cosmetic improvements where condition does not directly contribute to the need of the improvement are ineligible. So I think that that really covers us, a holistic approach from, on this grant, that we are targeting structural needs, not cosmetic.
Yeah. Well, that were, that summarizes my, my comments.
Okay, if we're good, gentlemen, do I have a motion?
Well, I would, I would like to see the...
With the modifications?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, just one, one review of that. And, you know, instead of going through, discussing it again, if it returned as a consent agenda item, that would be easier.
Okay.
So, if you want, let's see...
Can I, can I get some, will there be direction within, is there a motion to table it with some direction?
I was working on, on that. I thought we probably needed similar direction in that. Let's see, I move that the Central Business District Commercial Building Grant Program data be modified as discussed, and presented with the applicable resolution as a consent item in a future commission meeting.
May I ask a clarification question? So, if I, for example, on the, the painting, am I taking that out? Or is it intuitive that exterior painting that's purely cosmetic is not eligible? However, if I've got, you know, wood rot on my, around the top of my building, and I replace it, that, that painting is ineligible, correct?
I would take the painting, my idea is take the painting out and let, because we're saving the money, and they do all the painting. Then you don't get into a question of, of painting from one building to another. Well, if you painted his, why aren't you painting mine? And, you know, you, you get, then you go, well, his was primed, and we have to do that. Well, mine was peeling, why aren't you painting it, so... And I can send you what I've marked up, that would be easier.
Yes, thank you.
I'll copy it and send it tomorrow.
Okay, so, painting, the initial statement, and then you want me to remove the Housing Authority and Economic Development Advisory Board member from voting rights?
Right.
Okay.
And I can send that. I'll send the whole thing that I marked up.
Are there any other concerns from the other commissioners that you would like to see us to modify?
No, I'm, I'm good. I think we won't have to revisit this if it comes on the consent agenda with the modifications that have been asked for and clarifications. And we'll have a chance to see what those modifications are, and we'll be able to move, move on through it at that time.
Okay, but there was, you don't, you have no other modifications, other than what we just restated?
Just, I don't have any other than what has already been restated.
Okay.
All right. So, did you get what?
Did you get my motion? Do you want to read it back, so?
Okay.
Do you want me to read my motion again? Let me just restate it for every...
Okay.
Let's see. I move that we modify the Central Business District Commercial Building Grant Program application and criteria as discussed, and include the revisions in a future agenda packet as consent item.
All right, that's the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. All right, item D, consider adopting a resolution establishing the Neighborhood Exterior Grant Program.
Okay. This program will be administered by the City of Independence in conjunction with the Housing Authority to help home, homeowners living in the neighborhood revitalization districts reinvest in their properties, and to improve neighborhoods. Two or more neighboring homeowners must submit co-applications to participate. The City of Independence will reimburse each co-applicant a portion of the actual costs of improvement to their homes. Program eligibility, as well as a list of eligible and non-eligible improvements, are listed in the program and application documents, as well as an overview of the program's process. The main goals of this grant program are to, one, improve the housing stock in Independence, two, improve neighborhoods in Independence, and three, promote neighborly camaraderie. And the Economic Development Advisory Board also reviewed this proposed grant program, and recommended funding this in 2021 in the amount of $50,000, to be reviewed annually during the budget process. So a little bit about specifics about the program. There is a minimum homeowner investment of $1,000 per co-applicant. So that would, and it's for a 50% reimbursement. So, a $1,000 investment by the homeowner, well, really, you have to have two applications. So, a $2,000 investment in the neighborhood would equate to a $1,000 investment from the city. You must be located within the neighborhood revitalization districts. It is for, oops, non, non-commercial buildings, so it's residential properties only. And you must have a partnering neighbor. And we were specifically ambiguous with our definition of neighboring, you know, partnering neighbor. We just said, within line of sight as a co-applicant, instead of saying, you know, 100 feet of a property, or what have you. Other eligibility items are, you know, your real estate taxes have to be paid in current. You can't owe a debt to the city. You must provide proof of adequate property insurance. The improvements must meet city code and applicable building codes. It, it can't be paid for using an insurance settlement. You also must have that minimum exterior inspection, and those requirements must be met. If you fail that, that, that inspection, the, the items that you fail have to be addressed in your application to bring, bring it up to code. Do you guys have any questions? Or do you, I can go into more detail for those watching, or your preference.
Okay, and, okay, co-applicants, 50% reimbursement, line of sight. I think you've covered all the things that needed to be, that they needed to meet in order to be considered for this. And you also gave a list of improvements that were covered. Would you mind going through those?
Sure.
For the people that are also listening, then?
So the eligible improvements include facade restoration, exterior painting or siding, masonry, window and door repair or replacement, awnings, gutters, exterior lighting or electrical work, building additions, front porch repair, roofs, driveway repair or installation. Landscaping is limited to 20% of the total project, if not related to an integral component of the structural integrity of the, the home. And same, same with tree removal, must be related to, limited to 20% of the total project, if not related to integral components of the structural integrity. And ineligible improvements include fences, decks, patios, play equipment, lawn care or maintenance, swimming pools, and spas.
And then would there be, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have my tablet here today. What would be the maximum that they would qualify for?
The maximum grant is $5,000.
Okay.
So $10,000 or more investment, or $5,000 per, per property, so it's per applicant.
Okay, and at the time, they made an application to this, and they identified what they were going to do, they would have a clear direction on, these are covered expenses? So they would know exactly what they would need to complete in order to be able to obtain the, the 50% payment back on those improvements? And then they would have to pass inspection that they were properly done, and that they meet code?
Yes.
Okay?
There, one other item, it's on the, the, the last bullet point before the actual application that is noteworthy. It is limited to $5,000 in neighborhood exterior grant monies per property with the same owner over a five-year period. Specifically because we didn't want to limit, if a homeowner can only invest the minimum on a yearly basis, we wanted to allow them opportunity to go out for this grant for five years in a row to get the cumulative $5,000 grant if they wanted to continue investing in their property. They'd still have to reapply every year, get a neighboring homeowner to join in their application process. So we did want to specifically note that.
So if the investment was $10,000, and they would get $5,000 for that year, then they would actually be ineligible for future years?
No.
Past five?
No, they would not. So it's, it, say, you have a homeowner that can only invest $1,000, or, you know, the minimum over a five-year period. Within those five years, they're eligible for up to $5,000, the maximum. Oh, okay, I misunderstood then.
Yeah, because you, your question was, the maximum that they can get grants for a five-year period is $5,000.
Uh huh, yes.
Okay, yes.
Right.
Whether it's one lump sum of $5,000, or five years of $1,000.
Right, that's, that's what I was getting to, okay.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
All right, no, that's okay, all right, thank you.
And I think the other thing, and you, I, you may have said it, it's in the, only properties in the revitalization zones are eligible for this grant.
Right, understand that, all right. Commissioners, do we have questions? Mr. Hayes?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the Economic Development Advisory Board for their incredibly productive year. You, since you have formed, you have done a lot of work, and I appreciate all of the work that you have done. About a year ago, we, we did pass the revitalization work, and, and we did establish these revitalization districts. And I think this effort would probably jumpstart many of those neighborhoods in the effort to, to take advantage of the revitalization incentives... in the effort to take advantage of the revitalization incentives that we have put out there. The fact that it's targeted, and that it really can impact a given neighborhood significantly, rather than just approaching this as a shotgun effect where one house here and one house there, I think will be more effective, so that idea seems to ring true to me as being targeted and therefore impactful. I understand, of course, that there, some of the neighborhoods, then, the landowners, the owners of the properties may not be willing to be the first and only person to enter into revitalization efforts, and so this would also work towards getting some people off the bench perhaps, and into the idea of, that they wouldn't be the only one working on their house in their neighborhood, so I like that part of it, too. Collaboration's difficult, and I find this maybe one of those things that really builds some social capital as we're going through these processes with these homeowners, and hopefully also gets, jumpstarts our revitalization efforts in the neighborhoods, as nothing, nothing on the interior of your house really impacts your neighbor's property value, but virtually everything on the exterior of your house has an impact on your neighbor's property values, and so therefore, keeping a well-kept neighborhood is a meaningful thing for people whose major investment, their major source of equity is their home, and so, these are good points here. Granted, we have quite a number of houses in Independence that are old, that are 100 years old, and they need some constant care and attention, and some of them haven't had that, so thus, the revitalization districts were established, and that effort, we hope, will be jump-started by some of these other things we're doing, so the exterior grant program seems to lend itself well to revitalization. I don't have any questions, so I'll pass the mic on.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
I think the program looks really good to reach out into the neighborhoods, the only problem I have, again, is tax dollars benefiting an individual, it's hard to spread it that direct, there's no, overall, back to the public purpose doctrine, there's no actual tangible benefit to the community as a whole. I think the program, you know, for the Housing Authority to operate a program such as this would be great, it's great incentive, going out and reaching out into that low-income area, and trying to encourage and lead the homeowners into a direction of, in improving their residents, and, you know, giving them some relief in future that they need, that directive. I just can't see that it complies with our responsibility to administer tax funds that allows a benefit to an individual like, on their property, unlike the commercial business district grant program, it is a little more obvious or apparent that we are trying to encourage and strengthen our central business district and bring jobs to benefit the community as a whole, this project or program doesn't have that element, you know, for me, I, the program is good, it's organized very effectively, but as for city support, I, that's my problem.
That does raise a question, and if I may, are there other cities in Kansas that have this type of incentive programming towards revitalization of their neighborhoods?
There are, there are many cities within Kansas that are running very similar programs. We actually based this off of, is it Pittsburgh that we looked at, mostly?
Pittsburgh, Lee's Summit, there's, yeah, Lee's Summit, I think is the one that we really, but there are many programs out there in the state of Kansas with the cities that are providing. Look at Lee's Summit, they're doing some really interesting things, that the city themselves are funding, in neighborhoods, trying to revitalize their historical neighborhoods, trying to bring the people out of their houses back together, and so, I mean, they're even funding money for, I think it's Lee's Summits?
Block parties.
Yeah, $250 for block party, so, I mean, yeah, they're just really trying, we're trying to go back to that neighborhood and rebuild those neighborhoods, and so, yes, long story short, many communities.
So, that brings up another question, then, so then, then, those, how are those funds being provided in those other cities? What, where is that funding coming from?
Mostly from their economic development funds, so not ad valorem taxes, but franchise fees, mostly.
Okay, and then, on the other hand, if you, brings up actually more questions, if you start to stabilize a neighborhood, then you improve your housing stock, to me, you would elevate that property to a higher level, which, would that go ahead and result in a higher assessment for those houses?
Yes.
On those improvements, to where you would see more tax money being paid out on those properties, because now you've stabilized a house that maybe was on the verge of teetering, and now you brought it up to some type of standard that it's a viable house again, it's a livable house, so would that be something that would be beneficial?
Yes, so this program is aimed at stabilizing the housing stock in Independence, and keeping what we have in a condition that is livable and improving, and not deteriorating.
And trying to elevate that.
Yes.
You know, trying to, what we've got right now, if we can elevate those houses, as Lacy said, stabilize it, but it's also, you know, I mean, we, as you know, we can't go out and build new houses, and these are coming in at price points that we need desperately in this community, but we want those houses to be safe, secure, nice, you know, I'm going to feel good about my neighborhood, that's the goal of this.
And Jerry wants to touch on that safety aspect of a neighborhood, and how this can help with that.
Chief?
Gentlemen, anything that you can do to improve the appearance of an area is going to reduce crime, there's tons of literature that shows that, so that could go to some of your concerns about benefiting a community, and it hits on several different areas when you do order maintenance, you know, and then communicate that this area is guarded, people are watching it, they care about it, the other concern or thought is, anything that you can do to bring neighbors together and build relationships in that neighborhood also reduces crime, because we see in the high-crime areas, we see what we call a transient population, people come in, they live there a year or two, and they're on down the road, the neighbors don't communicate, they don't keep in touch, they don't take care of each other, they don't look out for each other, so you're hitting on two cylinders there, but you're really touching on a whole lot of different crime theories whenever you start improving the appearance of an area.
Yeah, there is a House bill before our legislators that will affect property tax, and I believe part of it is that they're changing that cosmetic improvement will not affect the cost of...
For assessment, well, not, assessment cannot be based on cosmetic improvements.
Right, that it's got to be a major significant renovation to do that, that maintenance and general repairs will not impact the valuation of your property as far as tax purposes, but, you know, again, I looked through different references concerning the use of tax dollars. The program's great, it needs to be done, I just don't feel that it qualifies, in my opinion, for tax revenue to go, I think it's a housing project, Housing Authority project, down there, their purview of low-to-moderate income housing improvements, I think that's where the administration and the funding should come from, not from tax revenue, so...
Hey, but would that be, would that be something the Independence Housing Authority would consider?
I don't know.
I'm throwing it out there.
I mean, I know they're supportive of the project, I've not visited with them about funding this project, because we currently, our directions that we're working on right now is supporting the land bank.
Right.
Supporting our moderate-income housing development that we're doing, you know, so, I can ask, I don't know, that question, but, you know, part of this is, it benefits the city as well, to improve your neighborhoods, and I don't think that, you know, we didn't invent this wheel.
Right.
You know, and I completely understand, you know, and respect your opinion, you know, Commissioner.
That's the advantage of coming together, we can share our ideas and...
Right, absolutely.
And come up with better solutions, and so...
Right.
And like I said, I think it's a great, a great plan.
And I want to make something, you know, what you said, that I think, because we have such a thought process, that if I go and paint my house, then my taxes are going to go up.
Right.
And that is not the case.
Right.
If you go in and make a $10,000 improvement on your property, or $15,000 improvement on your property, and you elevate it from a good, or an average poor, or average negative to an average positive, then yes, you could see some changes in your property taxes, but that's because you elevated your property, you know, you didn't just do cosmetic, you stabilized it, you brought it to a different level. With that, these are all in the revitalization zones, so any increase in your property taxes, you are going to be eligible for that rebate for the next 10 years, you know, the first five years 100%, the next five years 50%.
If you apply.
Yeah, if you apply, which, we would absolutely encourage anybody who applies for this grant to also, at the same time, apply for the other grant, the revitalization zone, in case something did change.
And I think there's a minimum on the neighborhood revitalization zone, too, isn't it, it has to be a certain amount?
Right.
Right.
Jeff, did you have a comment?
If it please, Mayor, the state of Kansas has an agency or a corporation called Kansas, or Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, and April probably knows more about it than I do, but for years, they have funded on a grant basis forgivable loans for residential improvements to privately-owned houses, it's, I've seen them come through my office, because they're kind of like Eisenhower subdivision, they expire in seven years, and, you know, they want the mortgage released and stuff like that, they're, they were, it's not as widespread in Independence, because this agency is statewide, they can't afford to throw all their money in Independence, but it does exist.
And where do they get their funding, Jeff?
The state of Kansas, general fund, I guess.
Taxpayer funds.
From income taxes?
Well, I mean, it's tax revenue.
Tax revenue.
Okay, Jeff, thank you for that input. We need to do something to stabilize, to help stabilize neighborhoods. You know, our housing stock is old, we're eliminating a lot of houses that are beyond repair, we're trying to save houses that are on that brink, we continue to lose houses, and that's less property tax we're going to collect, because the housing population continues to dwindle, we're not building houses to replace the ones that are being torn down, so, I understand Commissioner Koflic's comments, but understanding that the Kansas House Resources Corporation also has forgivable loans that have gone out to help rehab hundreds of houses. Sometimes we have to look just a little further down the road, but we have to do something, we can't continue to see houses continue to be demolished, getting to a condition that they're no longer repairable, before long, we're just going to have a series of vacant lots throughout the city, and we don't have any solution as to bringing an affordable property on site that people can actually afford to buy, it's extremely expensive to build a house, and the wood and materials involved in building a house now have gone through the roof, it's almost impossible to buy some of these products, they've gone up two or three times the original price in just the last, the last couple of months, and that is so coming to an end, so, I think this is a good program, and I'm in agreement with this, I understand his concerns, but we need to come up with something to see if we can't jumpstart some of these neighborhoods before they go, because on the backside, we're going to lose whatever tax revenue we're going to get if these houses continue to drop off the list, so, in a roundabout way, yes, it does affect the people that are property owners here, because that burden is going to continue to be shifted to fewer people, to fewer families, as that tax revenue dries up, that burden's going to be shared by fewer and fewer people, so...
Just, the only thing with the public purpose doctrine, it says the tax is not to be used for purpose of public, private interest, instead of a public use, so, that's, you know, I have, like I said, I have nothing against the program, it's just a funding source, I don't feel that that is, and, you know, we can look at what other communities have done until we back down, because I've looked at different sources to understand what this would include, and that's just what I make my decision on, I respect your opinions, and, great program, though.
And I'm more than happy to take this to the Housing Authority Board, and it may be something that, you know, like I said, for 2021, we've set our goals and our direction, that maybe it's something for 2022, we can partner, you know, I'm more than happy to take it to the Housing Authority, I would love to have the problem that we need more funds?
Yeah.
To fix up neighborhoods, and to redevelop those, so I'm more than happy to take that to the Housing Authority Board.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the point about these funds, particularly the Economic Development Fund, is that as we have dispersed them in the past, they have gone to support public or private entities in investing in Independence and growing their businesses here, in similar fashion, as this particular funding is being suggested even now, to get the individuals who own the property to take their money and put it to use in renovating their homes, is not unlike in giving a private businessperson an economic incentive to invest in expanding their business here, it's similar in content and construction to a business incentive, and this is for the neighborhoods, so...
Yeah, and those type are allowed under the public purpose doctrine, and even some forms of advertising are.
So, similar, similar in content to this type of investment, to get private money out of whatever vehicle it is in, and incentivize it being invested into the city, so, this is the content of an incentive of this nature, is to bring the private investment off the sidelines and into the City of Independence.
And I think part of, part of this whole challenge that we have is economic development, housing is absolutely central to economic development, we've got to have quality housing for anybody's employees to want to live in Independence, Kansas, so, you know, that's part of trying to stabilize these neighborhoods, and bring those houses at those various different, you know, price points, so that we can have those employees here in Independence, so...
Leonard's point is really a legal point, you know, what is and what isn't the public purpose, and you're a legislative body, if you make a finding on the three... And you're a legislative body. If you make a finding on the 3-0 vote or 2-1 vote or whatever that a certain program benefits the public, you've made that finding, and if it's made in good faith, it's, it's going to stand. There'll always be a difference of opinion on that subject though.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
But we can, we can, uh, we can work, as you mentioned, we can go ahead and work through that and, and not be in any violation of any particular.
I, I don't, as long as you make a legislative finding that it's for the good of the public. It's not like you're saying, "We're going to paint Jeff Chud's house." I mean, you haven't chosen a house in particular. You're putting out a grant program, which is.
And it's open to anyone in that particular area, that revitalization area. So, I understand. And this isn't related to, i- i- in a roundabout way to what, but have, have we ever, um, used the Kansas House Resources Corporation? Is that something that would be available for this area to use?
We do.
We al, we already use it?
Our modern income housing grant that we just received was from KHRC.
Oh, okay.
As well as we have, the Eisenhower subdivision received funding from KHRC. We annually receive Tenet Basin Real Assistant Grant from KHRC. We've done a rehab grant through KHRC, so, yes.
And those are all forgivable?
Yes.
Um, loans?
Yes.
Okay.
They're forgivable grants.
Uh, forgivable grants, excuse me. I spoke there.
Which is a different program set up for that purpose, but.
Right, right. Well, um, then we need to make a resolution or, um, motion. Do I have a motion?
I do have a motion for you. I move to adopt a resolution establishing the Neighborhood Exterior Grant Program.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Uh, motion carried two to one. Item E, consider authorizing the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the state of Kansas accepting an award of $700,000 in community development, development block grant funds.
Mayor, this is the, uh, grant for the sewer improvements, um, in Basin Five, which is shown on the PowerPoint, and also some lift station improvements. And in order to, um, for the mayor to sign the agreements, the commission needs to formally accept the grant and allow him to sign the grant agreement and any related documents.
Okay. This is something we had already talked about, uh, previously.
Yes.
Commissioners, any statements?
I have none.
Commissioner Koflic?
Excited to see that it was approved. I, we've been very fortunate to get these CDBG grants. I think the first, of my first term, we received, I don't know, two or three, and it has enabled us to really invest in our infrastructure. And it's exciting to see us get, uh, these funds awarded again. And I, I commend the staff for the time to take to research and diligently seek out and, and solicit a grant.
And Lacy, uh, did quite a bit of work on this, and also the Southeast Kansas Regional Planning Commission also, uh, helped us with this, and trans systems.
All right, then, um, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a grant agreement with the Can, state of Kansas accepting an award of $700,000 in community development block grant funds and any other related documentation.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. All right, item six, reports.
Basically, we have the reports on the slot. I'll just have, uh, David just kind of go through them real quick. But if you have any questions on anything, we can go back to any area. I provided them ahead of time, so just kind of, we'll just kind of flip through them, and then if you have any questions, you can certainly, uh, ask us. I, I was pretty excited, all the stuff that did get done in 2020. During the pandemic, it, there was a lot of activity.
Yes, there was.
Well, I think the leadership team really needs to be congratulated for accomplishing so much in such a stressful year that not only did you guys have to contend with operating the general functions of the city, but addressing COVID, looking at ways to keep our employees safe, dealing with, uh, quarantines, dealing with exposures. You guys did a remarkable job that we can see so much accomplished in a year like we had. And that's what, you know, it, it's exciting to, to listen to the, um, plans, the master plan for the park and zoo and, and, uh, John bringing in, in new skills to the, the city staff. That you guys really need to be commended on what you have accomplished. This is amazing.
Well, I appreciate that, but we have a great staff, so I have to give them the credit, so.
Indeed, and just keep up the good work. Of course, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but I know that with your leadership and the, the quality of the staff we have, I see great things for the future of Independence. Thank you all.
I would just like to say, I know you do a lot of, um, work behind the scenes that, uh, the general public doesn't see, but, um, through this document here, they can see what has been accomplished. And I want my two fellow commissioners to say thank you very much for city staff, all that you do and the hard work that you put in, because I know it is time consuming, and it is appreciated. Thank you. I'm really looking forward to some of these projects being started here.
Yes, it's going to be great. And you know, the sales tax was a huge accomplishment too in 2020. So the next one is the Housing Authority's annual report, which is a separate report. I don't know if you have any questions for April on that. She put that together.
I think I'm good.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
Yes, I'm good.
Most of those you've sent to us ahead of time, we've, you know, um, we've had a chance to go through and look at those. Uh, everybody's had a chance to review the, uh, city board minutes?
Yes, I have.
I have.
Okay. Uh, moving right along, item seven, city manager comments.
For your work session in April, we would like to know if you would be interested in, in going out to the park, zoo, and cemetery and looking at some things, uh, like the mausoleums and some, some things that are going to be, um, important for you to see, I think, when you're working through the budget, to see some things we need to take care of. And it's, I, I'm a visual person. I like to have that visual. And, uh, we would like to know on that third Wednesday in April if, if you would entertain doing that. And so I can put that on the, the next regular agenda to officially set that. But, uh, I just wanted to check with you first to see if you thought that was a good idea.
That's the 21st, third Wednesday is the 21st of April.
Yes, it should be, at nine o'clock.
And you'll be in charge of whether, or, uh?
Well, no, but, uh, I don't think the roof's leaking on the mausoleum. We can still go in there, so.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Looks good to me.
Meet here and then go out, or meet out there?
Well, I'll put it on the next agenda, and then we'll kind of, we'll probably meet out there.
Okay, we'll just, we'll, at the next meeting, okay?
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's all I have, unless David has something.
Okay, there are no, any public concerns, anyone want, okay, none? All right, then we're moving to an executive, uh, commissioner comments, I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself. Gentlemen, any comments tonight?
I don't have any.
I have none.
I have none. All right, now we're going to, uh, an executive session.
We didn't have any public comments.
And I make a motion for an executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city's attorney regarding possible litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privileged exception, KSA 75 dash 4319B2. The open meeting will resume at, Kelly, you're thinking 25 minutes?
I, I would say 20, but.
20 minutes?
It's up to you.
So, I've got, uh, 7:25, so we're looking at 7:45. That be right?
Yep.
Okay, and that'll include, uh, Kelly, David, the commissioners?
David, myself, Lacy, and Jeff.
Lacy and Jeff. And.
And by phone, we'll have Seth Jones.
Okay, and that is the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carried.